May I share with life? Okay, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, at this moment, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting in order. Today is February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, and the time is seven oh three. Okay, at this moment, we can go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Vasquez, do you mind leading us on the, on the pledge, please?
There's no problem. Try and over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation. Thank you. All right, at this moment, Planning Secretary, can you do roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, Vanzuela.
Present.
Vice Chair Mario Macio.
Present.
Commissioner Eric Benya.
Present.
Commissioner Janes Kobosa.
Present.
Commissioner Ricardo Vasquez.
Present.
Okay, perfect. Okay, at this moment, I'd like to open up Public Communications. Do we have any communications?
Madam Chair, we do not have any communications at this time.
Okay, perfect, so I'll go ahead and close out Public Communications at this time. Next, we'd like to move on to the Consent Calendar. First Consent Calendar, we have the Action Minutes from November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, pass the minutes.
And, uh, a second.
Second.
Ricardo, second.
Perfect, thank you very much. At this moment, we're going to move on to the second item on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. While we wait for the PowerPoint to come up, I'm just gonna mute myself real quick.
Ron, and Madam Chairman, we need a vote on the Consent Calendar, so we had a motion in a second.
Your shit, go ahead.
Sorry, but thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam Chair Joanna Vanzuela.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mario Macio.
Yes.
Commissioner Eric Benya.
Yes.
Commissioner Janes Kobosa.
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo Vasquez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, now we'll go ahead and move on to the second consent item.
And that, that's not, uh, that, that's not Consent Calendar, that's a public hearing, so yes, we'll move on to that.
Okay. All right, so at this time, we'll go ahead and move forward with the public hearing for the second item.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, Planning Commission. We are at the, at the final stages after about two and a half years in the making and getting this downtown specific plan adopted. I'd like to introduce again the Downtown Specific Plan Team, Kaiser Ron Wala, along with our traffic consultant, Tim Ernie from Kittleson, and also Suzanne Huerta from Ringcon, who was responsible for drafting of the environmental document. So I want to welcome them again, introduce you to, uh, to the consultant team. Along with the consultant team, we have staff present, our Associate Planner Melissa Chipris, and also our Planning Assistant Marlene Vega. And last but not least, our Public Works Director, Sam Gutierrez. All right, first slide. So to provide a little background on, you know, where we started and where, where we're heading, where we're at, so that way it helps us understand the history. So in two thousand and sixteen, the city approved the downtown transit, a downtown transit oriented specific plan development, which essentially consisted of a traditional and, and form-based related standards, traditional standards as in traditional zoning standards. For example, lock coverage, you know, front, side, rear setbacks. And then in two thousand and nineteen, city staff determined from the time that the plan was adopted in two thousand and sixteen, in two thousand and nineteen, city staff determined that the existing max densities of thirty units per acre essentially meant that, that it hindered mixed-use development within the downtown specific plan, given the, the low density of thirty units per acre. So in two thousand and twenty, the city was awarded a three hundred and ten thousand dollar SB two planning grant from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And with those funds, we utilized that grant to update the, uh, the, uh, the specific plan by increasing density and also implement, implementing greater flexibility of development standards to incentivize housing production. So that just provides you a little context as to where we started with the, with the inception of updating the downtown specific plan. Next slide. So the process, again, we started in May of two thousand and twenty, and just based on this calendar, it did get shifted a little bit once we got to the draft of the specific plan. And so during, at the beginning of May and June, January, we went through a discovery, uh, phase where we were able to engage stakeholders, the, the community, and really collaborate with the community in creating a, a vision for the downtown specific plan. So this just provides you context as far as the plan. Again, the original adoption date was, uh, August of, of two thousand and twenty-one. And again, we'll go into detail on how we were able to address those changes based on, 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 on city direction. Next slide. So we went through that visioning process, and the visioning process, including a, a Shiret, which was done virtually for three days in the month of October of, of two thousand and twenty. And so that consists of, consisted of noon talks during the day and which included presentations on market assessment and development strategy, also elements of, of creating a successful downtown, and also looking at mobility trends and, and opportunities, and really focusing those on how they can be addressed in the downtown specific plan. And then there were evening presentations. And so that's where a lot of the, the collaborative phase took part, where we were able to present some of those ideas to the community and refine those, and then present those back to the stakeholders, the council, to further refine the vision and the plan for the downtown specific plan. Next slide. So this chart here just shows you going back to, as I made the point earlier, on why the change and why the need for updating the downtown specific plan. And here, it's showing what the existing downtown specific plan consisted of. And you can see there's a mix of uses, and it'll make a little more sense once we go to the next slide, showing the different zoning designations. So here you'll see in the adopted, uh, specific plan, you have mixed-use zoning, and then you have multifamily residential zoning, which are two different types of, of, of development standards. And then you have a mix of, of densities, again, you have mixed-use densities, and then you have a residential garden, multifamily, medium-density development standard of twenty units per acre. And then you have the varying heights, you know, fifty feet in the, in the mixed-use zone, and then twenty-seven feet in the, in the multifamily residential section. So what we're doing here in the downtown specific plan, you can see, we've essentially put together and, uh, a, a standards where you set up a predictable development process, where, where you have a much smoother transition of, of building types and densities from the core, the corridor, and then from the edges of the downtown. And those zones consisted of the downtown core, the corridor, and the edge. And the units, the densities increased from the thirty units per acre to a maximum of forty units per acre. And the heights for the core with the maximum of fifty feet, corridor thirty-five feet with the ability to go five, fifty feet. And then in the downtown edge, as you get closer to the residences, the, the height is, is less, so that ranges from twenty-five to thirty-five feet. Next slide. So again, here, as I was explaining, that you have different densities that existed within the downtown specific plan. You have industrial zoning designations, you have general commercial, you have garden multifamily. So you have a, for lack of a better term, a hodgepodge scenario of development types that existed within the downtown specific plan. And then you see you have your mixed-use zoning designations as MU one. So again, these are the existing boundaries of the existing specific plan and their associated zoning designations. Next slide. So here is the proposed regulating plan for the downtown specific plan. You can see that there is, uh, there is some uniformity and transition between the core of the downtown, as you look at the intersection of Main and Ramona, and then Baldwin Park Boulevard and Ramona to the west, and then on the east, you have the intersection of Ramona and, and Bedillo. So you see the transition of your core, your, your core, your corridor and the edge as you transition to residential uses on the, on the boundaries of the downtown specific plan. Next slide. So one of the, one of the key things in the downtown specific plan is really looking at the streetscape. As you can see, there's a, a photo here of the existing streetscape off of Ramona and what that consists of. Again, it's a four-lane, it, it doesn't necessarily lend itself well to a, a pedestrian walkable, pleasant experience. And you can see that it's, it's essentially overtaken by the use of, of vehicle travel on, on, on Ramona. Since then, we, the, there's been improvements that have been completed on Ramona, complete street programs where we're allowing for bike lanes, which has improved other types of modes of transportation within the downtown. Next slide. And here's just a rendering, again, as we're going through the, the visioning Shiret process, you can see what the downtown could look like and what that vision is for the downtown and that, that perspective of what Ramona could look like, especially with the, the tree canopy. You see the, the different modes of mobility here, biking, walking, and it creates a, a a pleasant experience for, for the pedestrian, not only for those that are using a vehicle. Next slide. This slide represents here, one of the, one of the key things that the downtown specific plan does is it sets up a tree canopy for, for defining the street. And again, it sets up that tree canopy to really define the, the, the different transitions and densities and building form throughout the downtown specific plan. And so that really guides us to, guides the tree canopy throughout the downtown. And again, it, it creates a sense of place, it, it defines a street, it defines the, the, the public realm for those that are, that are utilizing the downtown area. Next slide. This slide here, we collaborated with Parks and Rec. You know, one of the key things, as we noted during the Shiret process, and you guys all know, and unfortunately because of COVID, we haven't been able to take advantage of that annual street fair that happens in the summer. And I was quite, I was quite taken aback when I first learned that it draws regionally up to fifteen thousand people in the summer, so we collaborated with, uh, with Parks and Rec to understand the existing parade routes and incorporating that within the downtown specific plan and really plan, really build off of the activities that take place in the summer and really incorporate other types of open space activities and also street closures that happen during the summer, the summer events. And it allows for outdoor activities, again, here in this slide, you see some of the examples of what, what can take place within the downtown as far as our outdoor activities. Because there are some areas of the downtown that are, uh, that are in need of, uh, of outdoor activity. And again, those include food trucks, incorporating food trucks, closing streets to allow for pedestrian activity and, and farmers' markets. And again, the, the lower picture here is a, an actual picture that was taking place at one of the, the summer events. So we, the downtown specific plan really builds on, on what is already existing and strengths, strict, my apologies, strengths in that with, uh, with other types of activities. Next slide. And I think, so this slide here, at this point, I'm gonna transition, hand the baton over to our consultant, Kaiser Ron Wala.
Thank you, Ron, members of the commission and staff and community members. I, I, I remember, by the way, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I, I remember the very first meeting we had about two years ago, and we were interested in some of the observations, and we asked the planning commissioners, as well as the city council, about their understanding and their appreciation and their experiences in the downtown, and I think we got some comments. People noted that about twenty, thirty years ago, as, as a kid, they used to walk to downtown from the adjacent neighborhoods for ice cream or for hanging out with friends. But you know, you can go back even further. You know, your downtown is about hundred and twenty-five years or, or more old. And it really got a kickstart in nineteen oh seven, when the Pacific Electric Trolley Line came in. And, uh, over the years, was a flourishing place that, that was walkable, that provided a variety of mixed uses, and was primarily serviced by a, a trolley line. That trolley line was removed in nineteen fifty, and we all know post-suburban development following nineteen fifties was largely suburban in Perrin. You got development happening all over the city, including competing projects happening along the freeway and in adjacent cities. And, uh, and downtown began to lose some of its charm over the, over the, over the few decades. And, and I think some of the things that were happening in the downtown were, were happening not just in your downtown, but all over the downtowns in Southern California, where, yeah, you know, people combined some of the tracks and created larger blocks to facilitate more parking, because people were driving around to compete with essentially some of the suburban development that was happening, saying, they got parking, we got parking as well. But that impacted the downtown's walkability and, and access. And what this plan hopes to achieve is, is restore, to look at some of the assets, first of all. You have assets within your built community, you have assets that are natural, including people assets. Downtown has these wonderful assets, you have a station, you have art center, the, the park and all of the amenities that are in the park. So how can we recapture the glory that, from the past, the vibrancy that existed several decades ago, but suited to our present need, with a focus on the future to create a flourishing, inclusive, flexible, creative, and resilient downtown? So the plan that, that, that you're, that you're looking at is, is an illustrative plan, and in white are, are all of the buildings that are proposed. Now, as you look at this, you might think, well, that's a lot, it's the, almost the entire downtown. Yes, potentially leaving behind some of the historic fabric that you currently have in the downtown. But this is not a plan that, that, that we're suggesting would be realized in, in the, in the threshold of this planning process, which is fifteen to twenty years. It might be actually several decades before you realize a full build-out. But what it does is, it pulls together all of the economic development initiatives, the mobility improvements, the parking solutions, the arts and cultural happenings existing as well as proposed, that Ron referenced, the historic preservation aspect, parks and open spaces that exist, plus the ones that are being proposed as part of new, new development. Holds all of those public realm improvements, whether it's to the streets or the parks and open spaces, and combines them and attracts and aims to attract and coordinate with, with private investment over, over a period of time. Next slide, please. So this is an aerial rendering to the, to the bottom of the screen, on the left-hand side, you see the existing Morgan Park, and you're seeing the, the boulevard, and we anticipate that this boulevard, Ramona Boulevard, could be really a signature dynamite boulevard within the Southern California with, with its wooden canopy of trees and, and, and buildings that define the volume, creating a really a signature address within Baldwin Park, but also within Southern California, one of a kind boulevard. And, and as, as Ron was suggesting, as you walk away from the corridor into the residential neighborhood, the building step back as it meets contextually to the existing fabric. And there's also attempts to connect the station to the Ramona Boulevard, but then also connect Ramona Boulevard to the parking asset that you have, the parking structure that you have in the back. And, and there's a patio that is being proposed, a series of new proposed open spaces, both within the public realm and the private realm, seem to, uh, 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 position in such a way to weave together some of the assets that you have in the downtown, so they become accessible, they become walkable. Next slide. So that's the vision, how do you accomplish the vision? Well, here's the regulations, here's the code. The code is the primary tool, one of the primary tools that helps accomplish this objective. Now, the city relies on the private investment, private development, and majority of the, of the, of the sites that you see here, and the majority of the buildings that you saw in the earlier slides that were, that were colored white are going to be built by the private development, by the private sector. So having a code that provides clear and precise standards and, and provides a streamlined review process of predictable outcomes is, is a, is a, is a key and a very important tool that puts your city, puts your downtown at a competitive advantage, you know, in attracting investment. And as again Ron was mentioning, the, 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 the structure of the code is you have a downtown core that is your hundred percent intersection at Main and Ramona, that's where your intensity is the highest within the downtown area, and that's where we're proposing four-story buildings, up to four-story buildings. And then as you walk away from the core, the density goes down along the corridor itself, because you have a wide corridor, the frontage of that corridor can sustain taller buildings. So we're proposing there, buildings that can go up to three stories with the possibility of a fourth story, and that's the sketch that you see on the lower right-hand corner, that you can have a three-story building, and that three-story building can have a fourth-story element, provided you take comparable mass away from the back. And that's important, because as you have these buildings fronting this white boulevard in the back, it meets an existing residential fabric in many cases. And we want to make sure that that's contextual to what's being proposed or what's already existing. And, and that is the downtown edge. So in the, in the yellow ochre color that you see is the downtown edge, where two-story buildings at twenty-five feet high would be allowed, again, with the same concept, that you can have a third-story element on those buildings, provided you take a comparable mass of that third-story element from the back of the building, where it meets, again, existing context of existing residential development. Next. The, the standards are, are again, as I mentioned, clear and precise, but also illustrated. You know, people follow what, people design what they follow, and you want to make sure that it, the, the standards are clearly illustrated and clearly communicate what the standards are, and they're precise. So we, we spell out the standards, but then we also include sketches. So in this case, the upper-left diagram suggests where the building can be placed. It's not ambiguous, like your current standards, where you have a minimum setback, and the building can be placed anywhere, once you meet the building said, minimum setback. It can be placed at fifteen feet or hundred and fifty feet. In this case, there is a precise built-to-line, so the building have to line up so that you create that street frontage that we are interested in, that provides comfortable walking experience. The building heights are spelled out, the different frontages have different building heights. In this case, we're talking about the downtown core, where a four-story building would be allowed, a fifty-foot-tall building mass with the ability to have a parapet or a sloping roof. The parking placement, the diagram on the upper-right shows where the parking can be located, essentially behind the building, so the parking is not defining the street's frontage, but the building is. And then we're also calling out a variety of signs and a variety of frontages, next. In, in addition, as I mentioned earlier, besides the open spaces that will be provided for larger development in the public realm, we're also continuing that open space within the private realm. For example, one of the least captured spaces in, in, in a lot of Southern California cities, and particularly Baldwin Park, downtown Baldwin Park, is the roof space. If, if, if you've ever been inside the parking garage on the fourth level, and you look out, the views are just outstanding to the hills. And that's, that's part of the open space, and as we come out of the COVID environment, having access to the uh, having access to the roof, having access to balcony uh or a patio uh for buildings is is going to be incredibly important, so within the private realm, open spaces that will be required uh either on the lot or in the building are spelled out. In addition to that, we want to make sure the building masses are um pedestrian friendly, human scaled environment, so the width of the building is called out, a maximum width. So the bits are not just based on block length, if you have a hundred, four hundred foot block, uh you don't have a building that's four hundred feet long, you have buildings that are uh smaller than a hundred and fifty feet or two hundred feet uh that allow for variation, but also uh are are human scale. And then we also call out where the accesses are, what frontages uh will be provided, at the bottom you see the access for the vehicular would be primarily in the back with access to pedestrians on the street's edge. So this is for the downtown, the next two uh images are going to show you similar diagrams that uh were created in the code for the downtown corridor building. Next. So this is again the downtown corridor, the three story buildings with provision for a four story uh building mass along the corridor. Next slide. And this is the downtown edge, so the building masses and and as you can see between the the one before and this one, uh, you're getting buildings that are far smaller, that are far uh more uh residential in context. But at the same time, um, they're not all single family residences, there are a variety of building types that are encouraged uh within the downtown edge that allow you to gracefully introduce uh intensity within the neighborhood in a very contextual manner. Next. Uh, frontages are incredibly important, and if if uh if you ever walked on Ramona Boulevard, um, and and you 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 walk past a dead wall or a wall that has a niche that doesn't have a door um on the south side, particularly on Ramona, uh, you know what I mean. Um, and and it's not a very pleasant experience. Uh, we want to make sure that the frontages are 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 provide appropriate frontages are provided for appropriate buildings, so for example, if you have a residential building, you either want to step it back with a dooryard or 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 a porch. Or if it's a more urban building that's closer to the street, you want to lift up the fourth floor so that the uh the rooms inside that building have privacy from the public street. But if you have a commercial building, you don't want any separation, you want the building close to the street and you want it flush with the sidewalks, so people are pulled in uh in into the commercial establishments, and there's there's a transparency between the inside and the outside of the building, which promotes uh safety as well as visibility. Next. So this is what I was mentioning earlier, this is the classic uh um uh error that most uh municipalities do when you when you give it a block. Uh, and you have uh some metrics of what you can build, let's say, for example, an F A R of one, you just exclude that entire block as a building mass, right? Uh, so if it's a four hundred and fifty foot block, your building is four hundred and fifty feet wide. And then you come back and say, well, we need to break it, uh, so you have some design guidelines and 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 you try to break the facade and and create all sorts of ups and downs and niches and um, but what it's not doing is what we are proposing in this code, which is next, is to break that box. Or so when you have a four hundred and fifty foot um long block, break it into its constituent parts um so that you have an alley in the back, that alley provides access to the automobiles and service. Um, and then, once you have the alley, you you uh design the buildings for the context, so if you're if you are along the main street or Ramona Boulevard, uh, the buildings can be three or four story tall. But as you step back, your buildings are different, um, they are more residential, more house-like forms uh and a variety of them, so as you um you're allowing density, intensity to be eh in eh within the neighborhood in a very contextual manner. And then you have some standards that uh describe how the facade can be articulated. Again, the focus is on the public realm, the design of the streets, on the frontages, not so much on the use. Now, I'm not going to talk about the users uh in this presentation, but the users are dealt with uh within the code, and they're intended to be flexible so that the market can dictate. Because uh rather than having the land uses be very specific and you spell them out, saying X, Y, and Z are allowed, well, X, Y, and Z is no longer in existence. We have A, B, and C users uh in the future. So instead of actually defining each and every use and creating pages of users, we have defined them broadly. And then given the planning commission and and uh and the community development director some discretion um so that the market can can uh can um respond and the building in the the city in the downtown can respond uh and adjust to the market. Next. I think that's you, Ron.
There you go. Thank you Kaiser. Um, so the development potential, as Kaiser mentioned, I want to um uh uh, as Kaiser mentioned earlier on, that this plan is uh is eh originally, you know, when you look at it, it's usually about a, you know, a fifteen year plan, but in reality, when you really look at the 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 uh projection of this plan, um, as Kaiser mentioned, it's several decades, uh as you saw the build out aerial, uh the build out uh plan um uh at its capacity, and so the development potential uh to understand uh based on the the changes in um intensity in the in and also the the increase in boundary um based on in comparison to what the existing plan uh, wh- what it currently um consists of. Um, that difference is uh of uh seven uh acres um increase uh from the existing hundred and fifteen acres uh in the existing uh specific plan. And then for residential units, as approved, originally was up eight hundred and thirty-three units. And with this plan, there's an increase of nine hundred and twelve uh units. For non-residential, uh again, based on the analysis on the building types and intensity based on the core, the corridor uh and the edge, uh there is a, there is a uh a decrease from two hundred and eighty-nine, a little over two hundred and eighty-nine thousand uh to a hundred and eighty-six. Uh, a little under uh a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, so which uh comes out to a decrease of a hundred and two uh, a hundred and two thousand. Um, and this is important, uh as we see the 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 projection, the development projection, especially for residential units. Uh, as you've been a part of in this past year, as we've been going through the uh the housing element update process uh that eh in in planning the next eight years as required by the state to plan for housing capacity. This downtown uh specific plan um was it estimates, uh, I'm sorry, the the downtown specific plan at nine, an increase of nine hundred and twelve units uh assists in meeting the state uh regional housing needs assessment uh for the city of Baldwin Park, which is an approximately, again, as you've been a part of these meetings for the housing element uh at two uh, a little over two thousand uh uh units, so this plan um uh essentially helps in in meeting that that goal. Next slide. There was an environmental review uh performed, an addendum was prepared uh and based on the um the updates to the downtown specific plan. Um, it was found that uh no, there would be no introduction of new significant environmental impacts beyond what was originally um identified in the uh two thousand sixteen uh E I R, the Environmental Impact Report uh that was prepared for the uh original transit oriented development uh specific plan. Next slide. So fu- uh funding toolbox. One of the really neat things about this downtown specific plan is in working with the consultant is uh including a funding toolbox. So it really puts um uh city staff responsible for seeing, and not only the city staff, but the city as a whole um and and uh guiding the city to uh to to keep with the vision um uh of the downtown. Uh, and again, it identifies uh uh special districts for fina- you know, financial tools, it identifies uh grant, uh, you know, state and federal programs uh and also public and private initiatives. And the way that that it uh is outlined in the plan is by policies and actions, and one of the policies and actions and uh that I want to identify is that the city um uh select an urban design professional to assist city staff in helping um meet the vision uh of the downtown architecturally. Um, uh, and as Kaiser mentioned, um, uh, to make sure that we are getting uh that contextual uh architectural uh treatment um in in enhancing the the uh and activating the the public realm. Um, uh, and it also lists a timeframe. Um, Kaiser's mentioned, uh, we've mentioned this uh previously in our in our uh in our study sessions where uh the policies and actions, are they ongoing? Um, uh, whether they're ongoing or long term, but it helps identify who those responsible parties are. And it identifies whether it's it's a, it's a collaborative effort between city staff, the development community. Um, and it it specifically mentions the departments within city staff, for example, Public Works, Community Development, Parks and Recreation. And then it identifies uh a cost. Um, and some of them don't require much, it just requires city initiative um to uh to begin that process of of identifying the policies, the policy or action that doesn't require um uh funding. And then lastly, the funding sources, I've mentioned, funding sources could be considered grants uh and also city general funds, and then also uh leveraging um uh 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 from the the development community uh to be able to uh check that box in meeting the policies and actions uh of uh of the plan. Next slide. So next steps, uh, one, I wanted, uh, one um really exciting um event that's going to take place is uh we want to showcase the, we're going to have an opportunity to showcase the downtown specific plan on March twenty eighth, myself and uh um community development staff member uh will be uh going to the annual Urban Land Institute, uh Urban Marketplace Event in downtown L A. And there, we're going to be able to engage with the development community and really share with them this uh downtown specific plan um with them um to uh entice developers and let them know what Baldwin Park is doing. Um, uh, which is going to be exciting. And as I mentioned earlier, uh, the next step is uh, once we get this plan uh adopted is to seek uh for an urban design firm, uh and again, that's to support the design review of projects to achieve the goals uh and the vision uh of the downtown. Next slide. So in summary, uh, staff recommends, uh, the planning commission recommend approval to the city council to adopt the findings of fact uh and approve uh mul- the multiple zoning uh and general planning used to the changes to achieve the consistence consistency, I can't speak tonight, um, of the downtown specific plan. Uh, that concludes uh staff's presentation. Um, I would like to thank the the planning commission uh for their efforts and their support throughout this process. Um, uh, as a stakeholder, as a community member. Um, and also, uh, I want to give a big thanks to the consulting team uh for assisting us in this huge milestone um as we get this plan adopted and look to the future uh uh and completing that vision uh for downtown Baldwin Park, so I want to thank Kaiser. Um, I want to thank Suzanne from Ringcon and also uh Tim Ernie uh from uh Kittleson uh for assisting uh the city of Baldwin Park um in in this uh successful venture. Um, again, there, we are here to answer any questions um uh regarding the presentation.
Perfect, thank you very much. Uh, at this moment, I'd like to open up um comments, concerns from the commission. Any questions?
Oh, Robert. Can't hear you, Robert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did you want to open up the public hearing and allow the comments from the public, if any, before uh the commission starts its debate?
Yeah, sure, let's go to do that. Okay, so let's go ahead and open up public um communications to see um what they have to say.
This would be, this would be the public hearing, uh, we've already closed public communications.
That's right, public hearing, Mike.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so um first, I just want, we do have one uh caller that is asked to speak for uh uh this item, um. If you can just bear with me.
Ron, i- is that in favor or against?
Um, I think it's neutral, it's a comment regarding the downtown specific plan. It's just a general comment regarding the the proposed plan.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, here we go. Okay, so before we bring on the caller, um, as provided, uh, I sent to you earlier this week, uh, we did receive a letter of support uh from uh Jeremy uh Weber, uh, an associate development manager for Evergreen. Um, so we will include this in the public record. Um, I will read from the letter uh from uh Jeremy Weber. Uh, as a California real estate development company with previous uh and hopefully future development projects in Baldwin Park, we support the downtown Baldwin Park specific plan. We applaud the plan's long-term vision of vibrant, prosperous, and accessible downtown as well as the flexibility and opportunity it provides for new retail uses uh as drive-through establishments. We encourage uh the planning commission to approve the plan and look forward to partnering uh with the city on specific projects that help carry out um the plan's vision. Okay. So let me call the speaker. Uh, let me call Merrick Chang. Let's see. Okay, we have Merrick Chang, uh, you have three minutes.
Awesome. Uh, thank you very much. My name is Merrick Chang, I'm uh live at one four seven five five, Baltimore Court uh in Baldwin Park. Um, calling today, um, first off, um, I want to give a big thank you to uh Ron, thank you as much to uh really responded to my email. But um, wanted to get back and talk today about um the downtown expansion plan, but specifically um one part of the plan, I live in the uh Baltimore community, which is uh on the corner of Baldwin, I mean, I feel the D O and Ramona and specifically the Pacific Electric Building. Um, as a resident, we've noticed that um the lights have been out for quite some time and that some of the windows that have actually shattered. And um, I've actually called in about this to prove I never received a response, but uh Ron had already screenshot beneath letting me know that the public works team was only on it. But um, this is kind of just um just a cautionary tale, I think, of um if we're going to expand and put these new houses in the community, we should also um seek to look into the projects that are currently existing or and the buildings that we certainly have and make sure that we maintain those as well. Um, I'm all for more housing in Baldwin Park, more affordable housing. But um, we want to make sure that we maintain and keep um intact and that we um do our part and our due, uh, that the city does its part in making sure, sorry, I'm at a, I'm at a high school, but I'm a high school teacher, I'm a high school student, I apologize. But um, yeah, that that um we maintain and that we look into um that we look into um specifically the Pacific Electric Building and keeping it safe for our our community members um by keeping the light on at night and also um making them less there. Thank you so much for your time. And um, thank you for taking my call.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Have a good night. Okay. Okay, Madam Chair, that um that is all that we have for public comment.
Okay.
For pu- for the public hearing?
For the public hearing.
Thank you. And so, Madam Chair, you can, at your discretion, you can close uh the public hearing and then go on with your discussion amongst your commissioners.
Okay, perfect. So at this moment, if there's no other public uh hearing, I'll go ahead and close it. And we'll go ahead and move forward with the commission. Any comments, questions, concerns? Commissioners?
I do, I have a question, Madam Chair.
All right.
Um, so if I understand correctly, uh, by Mr. Kaiser's um comments earlier, um, when it comes to dividing out a property, let's just uh for sake of of argument, the section where we have, let's say, superior, would that section be something that be considered uh one that could be cut into difference into different um uh sections?
Yes, uh Kaiser, do you wanna take a stab?
Uh, I I think your answer was concise and precise.
Yes, so absolutely, so that's what, um, so uh that is a one parcel, also including the marketplace on the western edge um where the ninety-nine cent store. That's another opportunity there too, where if um if development were to take place is to uh essentially uh break that that super block up.
And and mainly the reason for me asking this is because uh when you're uh heading up north on Main Avenue per se, um, the front image of the of the sides walls is 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 not a front image. You're you're looking at pretty much the back of the walls or back of the buildings per se because most of the stores are on the inner side of this complex. And and I can see this particular development of us um granting this um becoming something a lot bigger where we can actually see front side stores and developing so that we could see main avenues being one of our main boulevards where there's more uh like front stores that that can benefit from this uh particular development.
Yes, you you hit it on the nail, uh, Vice Chair. Uh, that's one of the key things about uh this plan is that you you uh you're not turning the backs onto the street. Uh, you're activating, you're providing that transparency um to the street um and and uh, cause right now, as you see it, you you see parking uh and then or you see buildings that have um uh that have blank surfaces, uh, they don't have windows, they don't have entryways.
Nothing.
So that plan, this this plan reverses that, uh, as you mentioned.
My next concern was um, uh, Mr. Kaiser stated that we can put buildings up to three, four stories high and um, you're saying for that, we don't need no environmental impact reports?
Suzanne, did you wanna?
Sure. Yeah, so um, there was an environmental impact report that was that was uh prepared in twenty sixteen. And so, sequer uh allows what's called an addendum. So, uh, we did what, looking, we compared the two, the the approved project from twenty sixteen to this proposed specific plan. And we compared to see if there would be any additional um, any additional impacts under the proposed, this proposed specific plan. So we looked at, as part of aesthetics, we looked at and land use. We looked at the um, you know, we we made that comparison and we found that there's no additional impact in in um above what was what was found in the twenty sixteen report. So um, e- essentially, that that report does cover the impacts that were that were anticipated under this plan as well. Does that answer your question, or do you have any other?
Fair enough.
Okay.
So I have a question uh regarding uh the setbacks of the buildings when these projects do start coming into play. Um, one of my biggest concerns during the last time when this was being presented and some other buildings are coming to play, obviously, our sidewalks, especially in some of the downtown area, they're very narrow, as states in the reports. Is there room for setback? Are we gonna widen those sidewalks? Is that in, gonna be in a play?
As as part of the plan, um, in some areas of the downtown, the, it does require to look at the the the, what we call the public realm um is to, instead of creating, instead of uh continuing the the those narrow sidewalks, but actually widening them by by, um, as we mentioned earlier, by including a tree canopy, really activating the public realm. Uh, yes, it does allow for opportunity to set back the building um to allow for, for example, like uh uh where you have uh offsets, not so much on a straight line, but it does allow some opportunity uh to set back the building. Uh, but the key is, again, those frontages that that we went over, the variety of frontages um uh create and activate uh the uh at at the pedestrian level uh uh an interesting um uh um a building facade um and and articulation at the pedestrian level. Um, so it does, it it does um uh emphasize uh to to incorporate that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Hi, uh, so I I have a question. Um, Ron, so I know the caller that just called in, I think it was a little bit hard to to hear, cause I'm sure it's on the telephone. Um, but so I guess the issue was that there isn't enough lighting, at least within that area. And I guess sort of the concern is that um as a result, that it wasn't safe because I think people were bringing glasses, or sorry, can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Pena. So the comment, um, I apologize if it wasn't uh clear. Um, the the major concern there, uh, we were not aware, uh, and again, as mentioned, uh, was able to communicate with our Public Works Department. We, the city does own the 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 former Pacific Electric Building. Um, uh, apparently, there's been some lights that were out that need to be replaced to improve the the lighting um uh for that building. And also, there was a broken, shattered uh uh window glass uh that needed, that hasn't been uh uh addressed. Uh, so that was the main concern there. Uh, and I think that it had related that, based on that type of activities, why, by introducing um development within the downtown uh that 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 sort of uh activity would would take place. Um, but as mentioned, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner, uh, we're addressing the issue, and we're gonna report back to uh the resident that lives at the Palmyra Court adjacent to the Pacific Electric Building. So we can get some lighting uh back to where it was, uh, so that way it uh uh it's a little more safer uh for those that live in that that uh uh that community.
Of course, yeah, thank you so much for clarifying that. So just to confirm, it's just the building that the city owns, it's not the rest of the um areas, is that right?
Correct, yes, correct. Yeah.
Okay. Um, though, I know that the caller had also obviously was advocating for um obviously more housing within uh Baldwin Park. Um, and as it relates just to to this plan. Um, so, you know, I I guess my question is, can we anticipate? Um, sort of, I I think we can see it maybe as a microcosm or maybe foreshadowing as to sort of the downtown area um gets more developed. Um, can we just sort of an anticipate or at least ways to prevent um i- issues like that maybe occurring uh once there's ample development and obviously housing, et cetera? I'm not talking specifically about just sort of breaking glass, but maybe I guess just ways to ensure that there's safeguards to ensure it feels safer or at least looks safer.
Yes, I mean, there's several ways that I think we can address that that issue. Um, you know, one of them is uh, you know, that there's sufficient lighting uh on on buildings so that way uh you you're creating a a a safe uh 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 area where you don't get dark areas uh based on the design of the building. Uh, you you know, the 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 famous term is uh eyes on on the street um and uh making sure that we can provide that that type of environment. The other is um, as the plan develops, as we get, as the city um uh sees development within the downtown, uh, there is a policy in action there um to create a a business improvement district. Um, for example, like in Pasadena, your larger cities, Pasadena, Santa Monica, they've created BIDs um where even in downtown L.A., if you've noticed, been down there recently, uh, all the 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 activity that's taking place off of Broadway, uh, where they have um uh sort of semi semi police, uh, but they're there um uh riding bicycles, uh, assisting uh anyone that's that's within the downtown. If there's any uh uh issues like that that take place, that they can uh reach out to their local police department uh to address, address graffiti, address uh loitering, address um, you know, the the order to make sure that um the amenities are kept up within the downtown. So that's a policy in action that's that's in there um uh as we see uh further development in the downtown.
Great, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Got another question for you, Ron. Um, looking at the map, I'm just curious to know exactly um um how the how the borderlines are drawn out on this particular map. Um, and particularly, if you look at Downing on the the north side. I don't know if you could put up the map.
Yes, hold on one second. Just pull that up real quick. Uh, David, can you pull up the the PowerPoint? Please?
Hang tight.
Thank you.
We're fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen. Actually, to get a little larger one, David, can you go to the 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 first one? I think it's slide seven, there we go. Yeah, this one. Can you see the map?
Yeah, the map is up.
Okay, perfect.
So but so it does not, uh, Downey is not noted on this particular map. Um, but it's um right above the railroad tracks uh above above Badillo or where Ramona is now. You see the dotted, the dotted area.
Mm-hmm.
But the housing, the residential area that's not highlighted on Downing Avenue, I'm just curious to know why that particular section is not highlighted if it's if it's running all along Alderson. Yeah, there you go.
Oh, I see it. Okay, so here, what we wanted to do is just keep in line with what the existing boundary of the downtown specific plan. So we 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 didn't really kinda wanna blow out the boundary areas. Um, uh, but that's the reason why you're not seeing it.
Uh, but it looks like they were purposely excluded, like, to me, that looks like they they were purposely excluded instead of uh adding that particular section into it and to where we we can actually develop uh housing in that particular area. If it's being considered, you know, uh, having higher density.
No, good question. So again, the the logic there, when we first uh were going through the exploring the the boundaries and looking at where development um uh would occur. Um, and again, in keeping in line, we wanted to keep in line with the boundaries of the existing downtown specific plan. Uh, and uh, and so we're not with this plan is not purposely um excluding those parcels, but essentially, it's just falling in line of how the original uh boundary line, the original boundary was set for what is considered the downtown area of Baldwin Park. Um, uh, you know, um, I think as the plan um evolves over the years, um, do I see the boundaries um uh expanded? Um, that it, I see that potentially happen. Um, but for this purpose, uh, when we were doing the downtown specific plan, we really didn't wanna, uh, we wanted to uh um keep in line with what the existing boundaries that were identified in the original downtown specific plan.
Okay.
So hopefully, that answers your question.
Kind of, I didn't. Now, the other thing, uh, back in twenty sixteen, I remember that the the original plan had noted that um along Ramona Boulevard, we would have uh an amplified sidewalk to where some of the stores would have the opportunity to have seating area uh for customers out in the front, sort of like a patio type of uh space. Um, is that still in the works?
Yes, and so, yes, and a lot of, a lot of the, um, yes, absolutely. This plan promotes uh that type of activity uh for outdoor dining, outdoor activities. Um, uh, uh, which consists of of um activating uh again, that that, we're going back to that term, the that public realm. So yes, this plan exactly does that. And again, just to use a a a recent example, uh, not within the downtown specific plan, but if you've noticed that the the bistro restaurant that just opened up across the street from from City Hall, you've noticed that they've activated that public realm, and if you remember how uh how uh that space wasn't being used prior to that restaurant coming in, um, they've been able to activate that area by uh outdoor seating, uh, lighting, uh, tables. Um, and you can see how that that spurs uh pedestrian uh activity. Uh, so to answer your question, yes, this plan does do that.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Any other comments, questions, commissioners? Okay, I'll take it that we don't have any more questions or comments. At this moment, I'll close out the commenting from the commentary from the commission. And we'll move forward with um motioning to move this forward to the council. I'll go ahead in motion.
Second it.
Can I get a vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Madam Chair Joanna Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mario Masial?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo Vazquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Janes Cobosa?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
At this time, I'd like to go ahead and have any staff report being presented.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, um, uh, our next planning commission meeting, uh, we will not be having one on March ninth. Uh, but our next uh tentatively scheduled planning commission meeting would be Uh, but our next uh tentatively scheduled planning commission meeting would be uh March uh twenty-third. Uh, I'd also like to mention uh that the, the downtown specific plan is tentatively scheduled uh to go for final adoption before the city council. Uh, on March uh sixteen. Um, again, we want to thank the, the planning commission uh for all their support uh in seeing this uh plan through. And again, uh, uh, like to thank the uh consultant team and assisting the s- staff. Uh, and, and the city achieved this, this big milestone. Um, and this new plan and this new vision uh for downtown Baldwin Park.
Perfect, thank you. Any report of officers? No, perfect. Okay, before we do close out, I do want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you to all the staff. And Ron and your entire team, you guys have worked really hard on doing this. You guys did a really good job at bringing. Uh, a new and revised plan to life, and it looks really great. So I'm really excited what's, what are the next steps after this. So thank you.
Thank you.
I like to piggyback on that, too. You guys have done a phenomenal job. I know this has uh been in the works for a while already. Um, and uh, I can see, I can actually picture this in the future already. So it's a, it's a great, a great plan to actually uh. Um, redevelop our downtown area uh so that we could get more or livelihood there because it needs it, it needs it, and we deserve it.
Yes.
I, I think all our surrounding cities know that, hey, we're, we're, we're the middle of this, or residents from around everywhere. West Covina, Covina, all travel through Baldwin Park uh due to the traffics that we have on our ten freeways. And so, uh, this is key. This is key for us to uh. Liven up uh downtown area to where we can bring more revenue and, and uh.
Newer businesses.
New businesses, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Alrighty, so at this moment, we'll go ahead and proceed with um. Closing off the meeting for today.
A motion to adjourn.
Time is late, fourteen. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Bye. Good night. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.